Eh ho, he na da il dit o e ni cen. Ko he masa nin he chen he na le. Sylkej ke dan lini dan zaden dakre na nish olka ike dan dakre ho. Ya at ehon he lna hota no le ko, aro he na tani dan lini a tsro ho. N'chab el na da hon tlod no le, aro ho de il nishi. A la laj de il nishi ko ina 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 kada mlini. Aro ko sylado ko ne il sesu. At ehon n'chab el won lo ho, n'jono beda docha. N'jono ho kesmish da toh le, nas ho ne n'joo. Ho ta e tsorizin lini ho, aho n'che hende. Behe na nas si do, be ben na nasni do le ho. Aro da ltsa den zaden da aldehi bedo ya at ehon. Bel na da hota no le ho, g'niltsavo ea tsorizin lini ho. Behe na nas si no le, a di da beni tsro. Hujonasli, 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 hujonasli.
Thank you for tuning in. At this time, we'd like to welcome each and every one of you. We just opened with a prayer. At this time, we'll go ahead and hand it over to our Honorable President Jonathan Nas. Mr. Nas, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Fowler, and thank you for the prayer for our nation, our people, staff here, those that are on the front lines. We welcome you again to our Tuesday Town Hall meeting. Every 10:00 a.m. I'm sure you're hearing the news on television, radio, maybe on the internet about the increase in cases all across the country. COVID-19 and RSV. You know, we are in this country at a height of respiratory viruses. And here on Navajo, as you'll hear from Dr. Jill Jim, the Navajo Department of Health, Del Yasi from Navajo Epidemiology Center, Dr. Va from the Indian Health Services. We are doing well here on the Navajo Nation. Although, as you, as we have seen the studies and what those indicators are, it seems that we follow in that trend. It's high in the country. Sometimes we're low here on Navajo, but once they start coming down, then we start moving upwards. And that's based on the past two years plus of this pandemic. So, you know, we know what those trends are. And because of that, we ask the Navajo people to continue to follow these guidelines. You know, these guidelines are in place to keep yourself safe as well as others around you. You know, last week, two weeks actually, we were in Washington, D.C. And I was fortunate enough to visit with Dr. Anthony Fauci. I don't know your politics, but he is a scientist and he does know about these viruses. And, you know, as he's going into transitioning out as well from the federal government, he also praised the Navajo Nation, saying thank you to the Navajo people, indigenous peoples overall, for really pressing against COVID-19 with these protocols that have been in place. I also met with Sean Penn, right? Core was here on Navajo and also Chef Jose Andreas, you know, World Central Kitchen. They send their greetings to the Navajo people, you know, about during the height of the pandemic, they were here helping, out there handing out food and supplies. And now they're in Ukraine and we wish them well. We pray for them for safety as well. But, you know, we appreciate the organizations that have come out and assisted the Navajo people during our difficult times. And now we're one of the most highest vaccinated people in this country, maybe even the world. But we've got to continue to get our boosters, you know? It's very important that we continue to get our updated shots. Right now, there's the new boosters for six months and older. Those will be available soon, so continue to get updates from our healthcare facilities here on the nation. You know, it's quite a shame if we don't continue to keep these boosters, you know, these shots, these vaccinations. All that hard work, you know, won't be there. We need to continue to keep those shots, the medicine in our bodies. And as you see in the eastern part of the United States, we see a rise in measles. And because people don't want to get vaccinated, you know, we, as a young person, we got our measles, mumps and rubella vaccinations. And that kept those viruses away. And now that there's this push to not get vaccinated, then you see these viruses starting to increase. So it's very important that we stay up to date with our vaccinations and our children too. You see, with the RSV going around now, our young, our children are most susceptible to getting respiratory viruses. So we've got to continue to get our flu shots, our COVID shot, all vaccine vaccines. And it's important because we don't want to see our loved ones lose their life or have some permanent health issues in the long run. So today, it's really just a reminder to give back, especially as we go into Christmas. We saw an increase, slight increase in cases during Thanksgiving. Back to gatherings, gatherings, our family gatherings. Just need to remind each other, and if you're vaccinated, you know, wear your mask still. But at least, please encourage our Navajo people that are most susceptible, that are in that most vulnerable category, for those that have diabetes or heart disease or any type of medical issues. Let them wear the mask, please. Let's get through this Christmas and this New Year's holiday without seeing a big increase in these cases. And it's up to us as Navajo people to follow those protocols, please. I beg you and I pray for the nation that we won't see people get hurt because of our inaction or just taking things for granted here. Let's continue to move forward in helping each other out, our family members.
Eh ni he mas tsro da, a'xhondi, da'osan ho, da'da kesmishche. Aro da'inochni do, le, to'ot a'belagana, kiya ta'chta di na hotzodje le. Ha, ahten go ea, a'ye go de dehskid na na. Eh binin na eh ko, a'da'ahliado dehno ho. Aro a'ixesche do in Washington, tsisbaniado, talishteji, keda des ni gisi. Kodo ha na ni gisi, bo dehleto le. Aro a'ko ni, a'ne he n'chachalche, n'chandarneshe, he Navajo Department of Health, epidemiology center do. Eh ha na ni gisi, bo dehleto le. A, da mo na atle ho na ke jinda, na sun nezna odke do. Koto a ha na ni gisi, bo nde ilni. Ba'da hotzine, aro ea, mot a'hi, shichaha na ho, zi, shichaha deh, shkene na da na dehni do le. A, kjo, t'shinit a'ei di, Thanksgiving ne, da de dehskid. A, kodo ban dahui le, ban dahui le hende. Ta xeni do, da'is tsan da. A, sha'otse, shee ka do, dekhus ntskragi, shiddozna, ta ximkhun tsundu. Kjo, he masa ni he chen, n'chachalche do, eh ba'adeit. A ni iltsko, ko dunai dunani, klini do, a ni he dehia da, a ni iltsko. Eh dunina, n'jono go, ne ni he na neshu da'ahlashe, e nochni internet, ga'na cha. He na neshu dehliya. Ako ha da'inochni do, kodo xie ea ha na ni gisi, ko na deh, ko na dehleto le. Ko n'chandarneshe.
Push here everybody tuning in. Continue to follow the protocols, have a safe week and take care of yourself. Continue to pray for our nation so that we can keep the virus low here on Navajo. RSV, any type of respiratory illnesses, we have the ability to fight by wearing our masks, using hand sanitizers. If you're sick, stay at home, right? You're sick, coughing, stay at home, period. Please, let's not think about ourselves, let's think about others. But I'm going to turn the time over to the Indian Health Services, Dr. Va. Dr. Va will give us an update, we'll go to Dr. Jim, Dr. Jill Jim, and then Del Yasi, and then we'll finish off with Dr. Perfilia Fowler. God bless you, enjoy your week everybody. Dr. Va.
Hi, good morning everyone, and thank you so much President Nas for those words of wisdom. And so, yes, my name is Dr. Va. I'm joining on behalf of the Indian Health Services, Captain Johnson as well as Dr. Gaines. And we do have some updates. First of all, I thank everybody who takes the time to join us on this town hall every week. I also want to thank our partners, you know, of course, the Navajo Nation for their level of support of public health and healthcare services and prevention. We continue to work with our Navajo Nation partners because that has provided the most comprehensive public health strategy to protect our communities. With that being said, some updates. We are indeed, as President Nas noted, we, as in, you know, in the U.S. regionally, we are feeling this in the four-corner region. We have been under some stress because of respiratory season. And it's not just COVID, of course, it's also influenza and respiratory syncytial virus, which is RSV. Our healthcare systems here on Navajo Nation, specifically our IHSS facilities, have been able to maintain, but we're definitely feeling that stress in our ability to transfer, you know, off the nation as well. And so, we do want to take this time to reiterate some messages that we hope that you can help share with your families, friends and communities so that we can have a joyous holiday season, but we're doing it in a way that's safe and, you know, protecting ourselves as well as protecting others. So, on the COVID front, we have some exciting news. I do want to share this, so I'm going to go ahead and share my screen. So, at this time, the bivalent booster. And this is the booster that really targets the current strain and all the strains of COVID that's coming out of with this current strain. It has been found to be very effective, especially against the most harmful outcomes, and that's hospitalizations and deaths. And now, it's finally available and recommended to those that are six months and older. And so, we now have that recommended and available to our smallest, youngest population. And I'm excited about that as a public health provider as well as a parent to, you know, to young kids. And so, what does that mean? First of all, I'm going to go, I'm not, I know this is very wordy, but I'm just going to highlight some key things. And if you don't catch it all, don't worry about it. The important thing is that the bivalent booster is available to kids as young as six months. That's the important message here. So, children six months through five years of age who received the original vaccine with Moderna, and they've received both of those vaccines, and it's been two months since their last dose. They are now eligible for a bivalent, the new bivalent booster. Now, if they are six months to four years and they got the Pfizer dose and they received two of the three dose series, they are also eligible for a bivalent booster as long as they're within that, outside the two months. For kids that received all three series of the Pfizer dose, they are not currently eligible. And so, there is that one exception here. Regardless of what I just said, if you have any questions, know that this is available and reach out to your nearest facility and ask. Ask them to see if your child, based on whether they got Moderna or Pfizer and where they are in their series, if they're eligible at this time for the bivalent booster. Right now, all of our IHSS sites and sites have already put the orders in and likely have already received supply. They are just working on the other details to make sure that, you know, that everything is correct in terms of documentation, messaging, et cetera, before they can administer it. And so, just keep an ear out and an eye out for when your closest healthcare facility is going to be ready to provide this because either it's within days at this time, okay? So just keep an ear out and eye out when that's available at the nearest clinic near you. The other thing, so, you know, I'm happy about this. The other thing I want to reiterate, as President Nas was saying, was not everything is COVID right now. And that's why our healthcare and public health systems are under stress. It's that we have other respiratory viruses also circulating. One of them, of course, is RSV, you've heard that multiple times. And the highest risk groups are those tiniest kids that I was discussing before, as well as our elderly population. And there is not currently, there's, currently there is no available vaccine for this. So a lot of this is just trying to prevent transmission. Everything that you're doing with COVID will work on this as well. In addition to that, making sure that you wash your hands often, making sure that folks are avoiding close contact with sick people or you making sure that those tiny little folks or your, you know, highest risk folks in your family are avoiding close contact with sick people. Cover any coughs and sneezes. Cleaning and disinfecting surfaces will help in this situation. Avoid touching your face. And then, as President Nas said, if you are sick, please stay home, okay? That's really important. All of this, again, will protect against spread for both COVID and RSV. But unlike COVID and unlike flu, RSV does not currently have an available vaccine. All right, flu. So flu activity is high and it's, it's high in across the U.S. as well as in the four-corner region. And, you know, we are seeing more and more flu visits in our D as well as in primary care right now, sick visits. And so, the circulating strain right now is not a new strain. It's influenza A. And our vaccine that we have right now, it targets influenza A. And so, the vaccine is effective. With that being said, what can we do as parents or as community members to make sure that we protect against getting sick ourselves as well as others? And so, some things. What is flu? Flu is a contagious respiratory illness caused by influenza viruses that infect the nose, the throat, lungs. Flu viruses also cause illness and, like I said, some worse outcomes such as hospitalizations, hospital stays and deaths in the U.S. And so, most cases our flu are mild, but there are situations where high-risk groups, including babies and children and elderly folks, that can lead to more worse outcomes. So how serious is the flu? As I said, flu illness can vary from mild to severe. Most cases it's mild. While flu can be serious even in kids who are healthy, it can be especially dangerous for young children and children of any age who have certain chronic health conditions. So children younger than five years of age, especially those less than two years of age, are at higher risk of developing these serious flu-related complications. And then, of course, kids with any chronic health conditions, such as asthma or diabetes, are also at high risk. So what are some of the symptoms? And some of this will sound familiar. Fever, are feeling feverish, coughs, sore throat, runny nose, muscle and body aches, headaches, fatigue, just feeling tired. Some people may even have vomiting and diarrhea. And so, you know, it's important to note that not everyone with flu will have fever. You may have any combination, combinations of these symptoms. And so, what can we do to protect yourself and to protect kids? You know, definitely ask your healthcare, look, again, keep an ear out, keep an eye out for what's available at your facility. Flu vaccines are available. Anyone six months of age and older should get a flu vaccine, okay? Ideally, we would hope that most people got their flu vaccines by now, but I know flu vaccine rates have been low this year nationally and regionally. Children six months through eight years of age may even need two doses of flu vaccines, okay? And then, children younger than six months are at highest risk for severe illness, but they are too young to be vaccinated. This is where they need your help to stay protected, right? Because they don't have a vaccine. So parents, siblings, family members who care for these tiny infants should be vaccinated in order to help protect those youngest kiddos who cannot be vaccinated. One last thing I do want to note is, you know, for example, if your child is sick, make sure the child gets plenty of rest and drinks and enough fluids. Make sure your child is, if your child is at a higher risk for flu complications, call your doctor, okay? Or take them to the doctor right away if they develop flu symptoms. If your child becomes sick with flu, it is recommended that they stay home for at least 24 hours after their fever is gone and their symptoms have improved or resolved. And this is in the scenario that they don't need more clinical evaluation, okay? And a fever is defined as 100 degrees or higher. And I say this because like, they may not have COVID, but if you're thinking about sending them to school, if they're still feverish, please keep them at home. And is there any medicine to treat the flu? Yes, there are. Antiviral drugs are our prescription medications that can be used to treat the flu. They, what they do is they can shorten the time that you are ill and maybe make those symptoms more mild. But it really works best if it's within one to two days of when symptoms start. And so, this is where, again, you know, if you have or someone you care for has symptoms that are persistent or worse, you know, reach out to your healthcare facility to see, to get tested to see if they do have the flu or something else. But if they have the flu, there is treatment for it, but it's timing. It would have to be done within 48 hours, one to two days from the time symptoms start. And so, overall, masking helps. Making sure that you wash your hands, right? All of it sounds familiar. Making sure that you clean and disinfect surfaces. Making sure that you stay away from people that are sick or you stay away from others if you are sick. And then, in regards to flu and COVID, now the bivalent booster is available for those that are six months and older and for the flu vaccine. It is available for those that are six months and older. And for some individuals, especially kids, they may even need two doses of flu vaccine. I will now hand this off to Dr. Jill Jim, who is our director for the division, I'm sorry, for the Navajo Department of Health. And she will be able to provide further updates. And I know Del Yasi from Navajo EpiCenter will be able to provide more detailed updates on what's happening here in Navajo. Thank you all so much for joining.
Thank you, Dr. Va, for all your comments and always just reminding us every single day of this month and every single day during this pandemic. It's not over yet, so. I'm Dr. Jill Jim, I'm the Executive Director for Navajo Department of Health. N'chachalche do, dekhus ntskragi, na se, at'ha, a'di a'ko nochni do. Te'ko do yod on'ldi ket'nin he ne, a'bit koto ha na eske, n'chachalche, na naj, do di. A'bita a'dekhusi do di, flu da, da, any do, kola do, RSV da, da, any A, a'dekho nochni do. So, a'chi, a'chinidi, wadi na, di Christmas break, da'le, a'chi, a'chi ba'da ha nusin do, kadi. Eh, t'at'achinigi, with COVID-19, t'at'ado yod, b'tha'ha na eske, t'at'eh. A'chi, tslo, shahat'ni, enda, do zor pehuzin, da do, a'chi, ben na, a'chi, da'achliado, da'chati. So just wanted to remind everyone, I mean, I think we're going to repeat a lot of these same messaging. I know that we are not completely out of the pandemic. We want everyone to take precaution, especially if you're coming back from the city to visit elders, those with underlying health conditions or just anyone as well too, to make sure that you have no symptoms a couple of days prior. You haven't been in close contact, maybe with someone that tested positive for COVID or other respiratory viruses. We know a lot of this is transmittable now through COVID-19 as we've seen that demonstrated for a number of years now. So, so be careful when you're out there, even this weekend. You might be out Christmas shopping, you might be out at the mall visiting friends. You might having, you might be having some sort of pre-Christmas dinners and gatherings with families. So just be careful out there and just think of your relatives and in regards to just keeping everyone healthy. We already have seen some cautionary hospitalizations. We don't want to overwhelm our healthcare system. Our healthcare workers are burnt out practically from the last couple of years dealing with COVID. So just take care of our first responders and our, and our hospital workers for those reasons. And everything is preventable if we're able to take the correct steps and things that we have taught everyone or we all have learned through this COVID. Washing your hands, watching your distance, avoiding crowded areas, wearing a mask, very, wearing a good quality mask within, in areas where you feel like you could be exposed is probably going to be very important. And washing your hands as well, so. And washing your hands as well, so just taking all those same precautions as well. So with that said, again, I just want to, um, hand over the time to Dell now. He's our, um, one of our Epi persons at the Epidemiology Center, working with Dr. Val. Every single week now to do our reports for the Navo people. So thank you for all that you do on a weekly basis, um, including getting our vaccine data as well. We do need to continue to get, um, our vaccine numbers up as well. I know that's a national, um, concern that a lot of people are now not getting the vaccines that they need, um, to protect themselves. So, um, maybe while you're here back in the Navo Nation, um, or if you're on the Navo Nation, find a way to work with the elders to get vaccinated as well and be up to date. So again, so Dell, um, why don't you take it away with our current, um, gating, um, or current report of COVID, so. Here you go.
Yeah, all right. Thanks, Dr. Jim. Thank you, everyone, uh, for joining us. And my name is Dell with the XU C COVID Epidemiology Team. This is, I'm going to provide some quick updates on our latest COVID numbers and our situation on the nation. Covering a time period, December 1st through the 7th. Uh, this was, we crafted this report last Thursday, December 8th. And we produce this report every week now on a Thursday. So we'll be doing another one in a couple of days this week on the 15th. So before I really, before I move on, I want to acknowledge our Epic COVID, XU C COVID-19 Epidemiology Team. And these partners have been helping us, uh, surveil, surveil COVID on the Navo Nation for, for almost three years now. So we have our own team from our Navo Epidemiology Center, Navo Department of Health, uh, Indian Health Service and folks from Navo Area Indian Health Service. And then some tribal health organizations, 638 facilities on, on Navajo. And some folks have been helping us in person and also virtually from CDC. All the way from Atlanta, Georgia, and the CDC Foundation from Atlanta as well. And then some people from Johns Hopkins Center for Indigenous Health. And then Community Outreach and Patient Empowerment, which is also known as COPE. And then, uh, TGen from the Flagstaff Campus have been helping us with the COVID, um, strain surveillance, which is the sequencing, sequencing work. And then our, of course, our, our state partners from Arizona, New Mexico and Utah State Departments of Health. So we have been, uh, continue to be a large, uh, team working on COVID, uh, across Navajo, uh, with folks from all these, um, organizations. So just want to acknowledge them and, and thank them for all the work, um, they've been helping us with, so. Thank you. And then recent weekly cases and trends, which is a six, this is a 60-day time period going back about eight through nine weeks. All the way back to, uh, the first part of October. And as you can see from there, we've, we've gone up a little bit into November. And currently on this plateau, I would say, but throughout November and now into early, uh, December. Um, 355 new cases over a seven-day period recently. So then we have to keep in mind some delayed reporting. Um, those, uh, continues to occur, so, uh, this 355 might go up with our new report, um, coming up here in a couple of days. Core metrics here, we look at three core metrics. Uh, the first is a seven-day incidence rate, uh, which is now at 224 cases per 100,000 people. And this is still pretty high, uh, seven-day case rate for us. And then percent staff beds occupied by COVID patients is now at 8.7%, still at medium risk. And then our hospital, COVID hospital admission rate is now at 1.96 admissions per 100,000 people. Again, it remains at, uh, medium risk. So, uh, moving on to some additional metrics. Uh, there were 355 new cases over a seven-day period. And then our seven-day lab-based test positivity is now at about 16%. And then our hospital capacity, bed occupancy for regular hospital beds is at 72%. And then ICU bed, um, is at 82%. Um, we're, we're continuing to monitor the, these, um, these, uh, hospital beds across Navo Nation. Uh, we are right at the 80% threshold for the ICU beds, so this is, um, we're closely monitoring this, uh, moving forward. And then vaccine coverage, this is, uh, this, a new update will be coming out, uh, this week. Uh, but as of November 25th, uh, 70, about 70% have completed the primary series. And about 17% are now up to date with the updated definition with the COVID bivalent, Omicron bivalent booster. Um, and then the COVID strain surveillance is ongoing. I'll talk a little bit more in detail about that here in a little bit. So Navo Nation residents, uh, vaccination rates here. 131,766 Navo Nation residents have completed the primary series. 32,558 are now up to date with the new, um, bivalent COVID-19 booster, uh, definition, which Dr. Val has mentioned is now recommended for babies six months and older. Um, so that's, um, uh, the latest, uh, news, uh, as of, I think, last Friday. So, um, and then these are the Epi curves for the entire pandemic. Just, um, the red line is the United States, uh, on this little plateau, uh, as you can see here. And then the blue line is Navo Nation. Uh, we do fluctuate here from week to week, but we are on this little downward trend currently, so that's a good sign. And then here, as I mentioned, our seven-day case rate remains pretty high. As you can see here, the yellow bar, we are now number two, um, compared to the 50 states. And then you see the red bars, New Mexico, Arizona, Colorado and Utah. We're still within our region, seeing a lot of COVID infections and COVID cases within our region. So that's a, a highlight here. And then, uh, as you can see here, the seven-day case rate for the 50 states. Just focusing on our Four Corners region here, New Mexico and Arizona with this darker shaded blue color with the, um, the highest, uh, COVID seven-day case rates compared to, um, the other 50 states or 40, 48 states. High community transmission remains within our region and throughout really the US with the red color here, high COVID transmission. And then here's our late, this was just updated this morning, so, um, report 71. Uh, just one thing to highlight here is the, we're continuing, we're continuing to see the BA5 and the sublineages of that, um, which is, which including the BF dot seven and the BQ dot one. Um, there were more cases, uh, identified for these particular sublineages. It went from 660 from the last report to now 698. So this particular chart here, just highlight on the upper, upper graph here, all the facilities on Navo Nation continue to participate in the COVID strain surveillance, um, partnership with TGen. And then the bottom one here, figure five. Um, one thing to note here is we have now detected the BQ dot one dot one. Uh, here with, uh, uh, four, four cases with the latest, uh, report here. And then we're also continuing to see a lot of the, uh, BQ dot one, um, cases across Navo Nation, which, you know, reflects what's, uh, occurring across the US. This is the CDC variant profile for the entire US. As you can see, the, the first two here, the BQ dot one dot one and the BQ dot one are the, the two, uh, predominant, uh, Omicron subvariants, um, accounting for most of the COVID cases across the country currently. Um, so Navo Nation, we're, um, seeing a similar pattern, um, on the nation and what we're seeing across the US. So I'm going to stop here. And this is my last slide, so I'm going to hand it over to, uh, Shama, Dr. Fowler. Uh, yeah, uh, take it over. Thank you.
I hear she is, but on the, uh, and he'll know soon. Yeah, none of the issue came out, shouldn't they say, do my days, give me, it's not for the cheap, if I should change. But my heart is a cheater, I don't, I should, I should know that it was a whole year, and I used to shake it. Co-cool, but not in the name, he's an animal, he's not only, it's a little, little, he could go. Yeah, he'll know, he knows, he's a, he did, then he, I don't see, he do, uh, because, then he, he don't know. I don't hear you, I'm here with her, then he. I see that I cost. I bet that there's not see me do. Oh, God, you could do it. Is it a bad, a whole lot, man, that he did me? Oh, oh, is it, then I need to go to the net. Oh, I could do that, I need him. Is it, it's in the air, but I don't need it. Then it's odd that I'm here now, oh, oh, and he, eh, ah, it's hard to know that it's clear. When the house is, eh, she in here, then I don't really. The cost must eat at the top, but there's no, then there's see me do the cost. Now, I need to, eh, I don't know, he's not, they go now, now. I don't see, I'm here, I'm here, wait, it's in here, but that's not it, RSV. Then he, Joe, eh, he's still see it, oh, but not nice. I do, gee, do, eh, that's not. Oh, hold it, is it a bad, a whole lot, not a deep knee. Joe, eh, eh, is it, and then I need. Is it, I don't know, eh, eh, is it a bad, a whole lot, I'm here, no. Oh, I see that I, eh, do. Conkret mess, you're da so, he do. Eh, he's, he's not da so, he. I don't know, that's how I do, I'll try to add a deal. Do the eh, do, that's a, that's a, that's a, eh, at the, oh, you're gonna, eh, nah, eh, that I will, yeah, I need it. I don't hear my son, I'm here, chain, I'm here, now that I'm, then I, that's all. But I will, yeah, I'll do. I don't know, and I'm here, is it, and then I need. Joe, eh, I, eh, I don't wanna, yeah, I can't. I don't need it, I'm here, I need it, and then I can not, I do. I do, do, I see that, la, 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 that I need, tell that, that I need, that I'm, then I could, I'm here, then I, then I, yeah, I can't. I like, I, yeah, go, yeah, yeah, that's clear, that I know that. Joe, eh, I, eh, that I'm here, then I'm here, oh, it, oh, it, eh, yeah, I can't. I'm sure. I like, I can't, I do, eh, I do, I'm here, I'll do. Oh, God, you have, she, eh, I should, then I don't know, then I